Good evening and welcome to the August 11th, 2025 Yukon Planning Commission's meeting. If you guys would please stand for the invocation and the flag salute.
Father, we want to thank you for today. Thank you for this rain. Thank you for the relief from the heat. And God, we ask that this week as the kids and the students, the teachers and the admin, everybody goes back to school, that you would keep them safe, have them have a wonderful year. God, we love you, we thank you, we ask that you give us wisdom, and we give you the glory to honor and praise in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. We pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call roll.
Wright?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Clark?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Knuckles?
Here.
Item number one on tonight's agenda is approval of the minutes of the July 14th, 2025 extremely long meeting that we had last month. Did you guys get a chance to look over the minutes?
Yes.
Yep. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll motion.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Wright?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Moving on, item number two, is there any visitors in the crowd that want to speak on a non-agenda item this evening? Okay, seeing there's nobody here to speak, we'll go move on to item number three. Item number three, to hear requests by City of Yukon, Yukon Municipal Authority for a rezoning from A agriculture to I-1 light industrial at 3401 Frisco Road. We're also considering item three and item four together this evening. We will make two motions, but we'll discuss them together because they're similar. Item number four is to hear requests by City of Yukon, Yukon Municipal Authority, for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map from open space to high intensity at 3401 Frisco Road. Is there somebody here to speak on that this evening?
Tell you a little bit about what we're doing here and why. So, the rezoning came about because that is what the city council asked staff to do is to move forward with rezoning the property to light industrial. In the process of looking at the property, we realized that the future land use map has it kind of a dual use on that property of open space and high intensity. So in order to match the rezoning request, it was to change it to the, to the high intensity. That way it would match the rezoning request. And by doing the rezoning request, that then also triggers the plating process. So that's why you kind of have all three of them before you this evening. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, and we have Dakota and Jeff as well to, that can help answer.
Why rezone?
As far as why, it's to, in order to just prepare the property for development. There's no confirmed development on the property. It is something that the, we are looking at and staff has been working on trying to get developers to look at the property, but nothing has been confirmed at this time. We're just preparing it for that, for that use and whatever may come, so.
Today's current, what is it zoned as?
Right now it's zoned as ag.
And why not C-3? Why not a different zoning? Why have we, has the staff picked I-1? How does that fit into their vision? And why does it have benefits over the other zonings? Because I guess essentially you can come and ask for whatever at this point, so.
You can, and the, and the city council is the one that designated the I-1. When staff was looking at it, it was determined that by, by the rest of the surrounding uses, I-1 would, would be a good fit in that area. And so that's why we, we moved forward on that side of it. The I-1 does give a little bit more flexibility than our commercial districts do. And without knowing exactly what is going to go there, we had to kind of look at it and realistically think of what, what could go there.
In the comprehensive plan, you're asking to change to, you know, because a lot of it is open space.
Mm-hmm.
Was this changed in the past with the idea of a sports park? And if it was, do we, do we recall that? I mean, that's kind of what we're seeing in the packet here is, you know, something that says like, open space land consists of floodplain, local parks, you know, and that's what I wonder why, why it was even open space to begin with.
I couldn't speak to why it was actually formed that way. If I had to take a stab in the dark and a guess, it would be that with there being some floodplain on the property, that they figured it's going to most likely be a park or something long-term. And I know there's been discussion in the past of that, of that becoming a park. I don't know the timeframe of the comprehensive plan versus the park in which came first, but that is what I would, if I take a stab in the dark from the planning side, that's what, that's what I would say.
Do you gentlemen have any other questions for? Is anybody here in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter? Okay, one at a time, we got this hand first, and then you'll be next, ma'am. You know the drill.
My name is Amy Walters, 915 Stone Creek Boulevard. Just a quick question, the high intensity, is that where the, the park was going to be? Is that the same property that you said, like floodplain?
I, I don't know what was originally planned there.
Okay, but there is some area that's floodplain.
Yes.
And I'm thinking if we go high intensity.
It's low intensity, though.
Okay, low intensity. To develop it like that, is that going to put somebody at, or put us in a bind to put it at low intensity, knowing possibly that it could be a flood area?
Any development would have to adhere to the floodplain regulations, and that keeps any property, any floodplain or floodway out of the, out of any developable area. So, but they'd still have to, if anything was built in the floodplain, they'd still have to have the two foot above flood, base flood elevation and have to meet all those ordinances. So the floodplain would be closely looked at for any development that was going to be in that area.
Okay, and then what does low intensity even entail? What are we looking, like a scenario of what might be?
So, it could be anything from commercial to retail to a lot of different uses within that high intensity or that intensity of, of, within the comp plan.
Okay. Will intensity, would commercial not, I, I'm thinking ultimately we really want tax money from this. If we go intensity, I guess the low intensity, is it going to bring us the revenue that we're all really wanting?
It still could be potentially some, some commercial, depending on how everything comes out. And then if there's something where if a developer comes in and says, I want to put a Costco here, for example, I'm not saying that'll happen, but then we could look at that and, and figure that piece out. We just don't have any development in mind and looking at the whole area. Industrial makes the, the right fit for the moment, just looking at it broadly without knowing specifically.
I'm just looking at industrial, is it going to put a strain on water, electricity, the resources we have here? I know there's a lot with that, but ultimately, is it going to bring us more tax money? And that, that property is very unique.
It is.
I think we need to guard it carefully.
Right, yes, and, and on the, as far as tax revenue, we won't know what, what will go there now. As far as any water or sewer, that's what will be public works, we'll look at that once, once a develop is, development is confirmed. But we will, we have take that, taken that into mind as far as what could happen, what, what will we be, what will needed, things like that. So that has been looked at, just trying to be preemptive of what, what, what the property might need.
Okay, I'm just worried that low intensity, once we do this, once you put the genie out, are we going to be able to come back and get the revenue? You know, are we going to end up selling it or doing something else with this, with that that will not give us the revenue that we're all seeking for our community? Or, you know, or if we went back to the drawing board of a sports complex or something like that, something for the people of Yukon, that's it.
But, you know, I can't speak for everybody, but I think it's pretty clear over the last four, five, six months that we, everybody that's involved in this is very concerned with this bringing in tax dollars. I don't think there's a person that's going to make a decision that doesn't believe in that. So my biggest question was, is why I, you know, I-1 low intensity, right? Like because we have to figure out what's attractive to bring people in. And to your point, if C-3 makes more sense, and I think that's always something that can be addressed at the time, if a Costco wants to come in and that makes more sense for them, you know what I mean? Right now it's ag, the way that I understand it, ag's not very attractive, right? Because it's got such low restrictions. For example, they can't have anything for signage, right?
Right.
So you would have to rezone it, is the way that I understand it, so. And this was mentioned at the city council meeting weeks ago, but I, you know, I was privy to hearing it, but I wanted to kind of hear, you know, you explain it to the rest of the group of like, why are we doing this?
Okay.
And I, you know, what we're hearing is it's to make it more appealing to be sold.
Okay, thank you.
And from my understanding, like if a C-3, somebody with a C-3 wanted to come in, a special use permit can be done in an I-1 area to allow a C-3, too. So that still encompasses all that.
Gives a little bit more flexibility, yeah. Thank you, you're next, ma'am.
Stephanie Burgone, 515 Maple. Um, most of my questions have been answered with this last conversation. So on here it says, open space to high intensity. So that's what I was wanting, was an explanation for the public on what exactly high intensity, the definition. And light industrial, I think you answered my question on that. So things can be changed to commercial, and there's, there's room to wiggle in there. From, can it go from light industrial to heavy industrial?
Depends on the circumstances, I'm sorry.
Not without a resoning.
Yeah, with, to go up like that, to that level, my understanding would be that then that you would have, it would have to go through, because that's a big change from a light industrial to a heavy. There's noise and all the other issues that go along with that. Heavy industrial is pretty heavily.
Well, just any rezone is going to have to be re, it's going to have to come back before us.
Okay. So by doing this, does not shut the door for any type of rezoning then? Okay.
See, what we can't do is, is see the future and make a decision today for who's going to come. What we can do is try to make the best decisions for a future business if we can, you know what I mean?
For what we know today.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Amy McAllister, 14175 West Highway 66. So the question that I have has to do with the long-term planning of the city for our resources, for water specifically. And I know, I know we've talked about it, it'll all depend on what type of development comes here, but I can tell you, we live across the road and we do not have the availability of having city water. And I would dare guess that the vast majority of the citizens that live in Ward 4 probably don't have city water. So I've heard, you know, who knows if the grape, grapevine is correct or not, but I've heard that Oklahoma City is not going to be providing water to us starting next year maybe. So my question is, has the planning committee, have you all talked about and have you developed a long-term strategy around how you're going to provide just basic resources to the citizens of Yukon? All of us, it would be nice if it was to all of us, but my biggest fear is something's going to come in here and it's going to take water, maybe electric, resources away from the current citizens. And I'm glad we don't have city water based on all the rate increases that people have incurred this year. But, you know, at some point that could become an issue for a lot of the citizens. So is it the planning commission's role to do long-term strategic planning like that on utility resources?
Not normally, the planning commission doesn't have a say as far as the long-term for water sewer. On a staff level, I can say that we are looking at a capital improvements plan and things like that of looking five years out and what, what, what can we do for our infrastructure? Our public works has done a great job on creating a plan forward of what that looks like. And I know Arnold and his crew would be happy to, to discuss that further with you if you'd like.
Okay. Do you think that includes all the wards of Yukon? Or is it just the current citizens that receive utilities like water?
I believe it's everybody.
Okay, that's great.
That would be, that would be a good question for Arnold to confirm.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this agenda item? Yes, ma'am, Julia?
Okay.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Oh, Julia C., 605 Kingston Place, Yukon. So it says, consideration of adoption of an ordinance to amend Article 3 by adding Section 215, 310, data centers.
That's a different, different agenda item.
Oh, it is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what agenda item is that?
Sorry.
Number eight? Number eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I'll wait.
Yes, ma'am, you'll be at the end. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing further, no further discussions? So we'll have to make two motions. We'll vote on the first one and then we'll do the second one. In the case of the rezoning application by Yukon Municipal Authority, City of Yukon, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval.
I second.
Call the vote, please.
Wright?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
In the case of the comprehensive plan amendment application by the Yukon Municipal Authority of the City of Yukon, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes. Moving on to item number five. To hear requests from the City of Yukon, Yukon Municipal Authority for preliminary plat at 3401 Frisco Road. I don't think so, not unless you have something you want to add. Do you guys have any questions for? This is kind of a technicality, right? When you go in and do the change, you just have to show the plat, but it's already been platted, right? Am I getting off on that?
This piece has not been platted before.
Okay, that's.
And that's why we're having to plaid it with the rezoning, yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was your name and your address?
Let's see, I don't know my name today.
I want to interview, that's Danielle Steele, she's the new Development Services Director, and she has done a fantastic job. We would agree with you. Okay, so anybody in the audience is here to speak on this item? Seeing that there's nobody here to speak, we'll call the motion. In the case of the preliminary plat application by the Yukon Municipal Authority, we have read the staff report and received testimony in the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval with the following conditions. Correct the small arrows noted in item six, limits of no access labeling width of existing street pavement with directional arrows, showing detention requirements within easements or common areas and showing proposed public utility improvements, if any. Do I have a motion? Or a second, I guess?
I'll, I'll second.
Call the vote, please.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes. Moving on to item number six. Excuse me. To hear requests from Hinkle Oil and Gas Incorporated for a special use permit for the, excuse me, for an addition of an electric-powered natural gas compressor at 1716 East Wagner Road. Is there somebody here to speak on that this evening? Please hop on up here, tell us your name and your address, please. Give us a little bit about what you're doing.
Bobby Hinkle, 7318 High Meadows Lane, Piedmont. This is a small natural gas compressor. Not much more I can say than that. Due to Phillips 66, natural gas gathering lines, they have really high line pressure with no reprieve inside. So to make this well profitable, this is about the only way that, that, that we can do it, is by adding a compressor and.
Technology's telling you have to, you have to improve, right?
What's that?
Technology is telling you you have to improve?
Yeah, pretty much, yes, yes.
And you have an existing gas compressor there now?
Uh, yeah, I set a temporary one there, not knowing I needed to do all this.
Uh-huh.
And just to see if it'd even actually work. So actually, I saw that, that the well, it'll work for this well. I went ahead and ordered a permanent compressor that I've already actually set, but it's not hooked up or anything, so.
But it's electric.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the permanent one will be electric, yes, is electric, yeah. And it's really, it's a very small compressor. I would, I would actually compare it to like a, an air compressor for, you know, rather large air compressor, but just switched over for natural gas as opposed to air.
But it's essentially going in the same area and it would be basically replace one. I mean, you're not adding more equipment, and I, I'm sorry, didn't get to get by there. Is this, is this area fenced in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it would be inside the fenced-in area, yeah.
But you put a temporary one in there, prior to the temporary?
I did.
Was there one?
Prior, prior to the temporary one? No, there's never been a compressor there until the temporary one and, and now the permanent one.
Okay.
But also Phillips 66, natural gas gathering lines, they used to run about 30 pounds and now they're around 90 pounds.
With the compressor, were you able to actually get your flow going in?
Yes, yes, yeah. Very, very well, that I'm looking at a lot of other wells possibly doing that, too, around the area.
They have high pressure on there.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's crazy high, especially for an old well like that. You know, we've had it since the 80s and, um, old wells just don't like that, big, big pressure, so.
So not only is it for functionality for you, but potentially for safety as well?
Correct, yeah, yeah, to keep pressure down on the well, the flow line and accompanying equipment. As opposed to, at letting the well pressure up and all the equipment pressure up to 90, 95 pounds, we'd keep it down around 20 with the compressor.
I have no idea how that works, but.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Okay, thank you. I'm going to pause real quick. I need to make a change for the minutes because there was a typo in what I just read, and it's not 1716 East Wagner, it's 1616 East Wagner.
The, the city gave me that address 1716, so I could get an OGNEDR.
Can we check on that and clarify? Because I swear my research showed that it was.
But you are correct, it, the, the property right to the west is 1616, and I believe the tank battery probably is on his property.
The address that was on the agenda, the 1716, is the address that we, that came from the GIS as far as for the well itself.
Okay, we'll just go with that, so scratch my amendment and we'll stick with the original address. Sorry for the confusion, but. Okay, is there anybody in the audience that's here to speak on this? Yes, yes, ma'am?
My name is Denise Hurd, 4821 Deer Creek. So I live, my husband and I own the property directly across the street, kind of catty corner from the Hinkle Oil and Gas well. And I was very privileged to have Danielle come out last Monday. We were, we were joined by Mr. Hinkle and then also John Taylor. I invited them out to, I invited specifically Danielle out to listen to what was already there.
Can I ask you a real quick question?
Yeah.
Are you at 4824?
4821. You should have an email from me in your packet.
No, we've got a map, so I was just curious, just on the map where your house is, but go right ahead.
I'm right, a queer, catty corner.
You tell me your, your house address and we can, we can see what you're talking about, so go ahead.
Okay, very good. So this new proposal for the, for the new compressor, all about technology, I understand much more clearly now from our meeting last week, why it's necessary. And I totally understand the physics behind it. I also want to note that for the past year or year and a half, there have been up to two compressors that were across the street pumping, not just one, but there were two. And a lot of what we hear as neighbors are, were here tonight because of the noise that was generated from both of those compressors. There is currently only one, one of them has been moved off of the property. It was a lot of noise, and it's been a lot of noise for more than a year. A noise to where we are within about 350 feet of these pieces of equipment. We can hear it within our home, and especially pronounced on our second floor. It's also can be heard in proximity to all of the other houses that are adjacent to this, and it echoes right down the street. So I understand from Bobby that this new compressor will be more quiet, but as neighbors, we're already a little concerned because of what we've had to live with 24/7, 365 days a year, the past year, year and a half. And that's one of the reasons why I had asked Danielle out, because I wanted her to experience what's going on. So I understand that the new compressor is going to be quieter, and there's only going to be one. It is already placed on the property, the pole is already there, so I'm assuming that the other piece of equipment will be moved off, and then when that one is starting. So if you have my email, my, I.
We have your letter in our packet.
You have your letter in your packet. When we had our discussion standing out there, there were, there were two things that really struck me that I was pleased to hear about. First of all, the information about the new piece of equipment, it will be quieter, but we're not sure that it's going to be underneath the 45 decibels at 500 feet as is city code. That possibility of having that noise level still exists. So when we discussed as a group that there might be a possibility of enclosing this compressor with some sort of sound insulating building, and it is a small piece of equipment compared to what's there, in order to have some noise abatement for the community. It's going to affect our property values, if I can hear it on my front porch, you know, if I ever want to sell my property or any of the, any of the other people on the street want to sell their properties, nobody's going to want to stand out there and listen to a compressor all the time. So that's one of the asks, that if this particular permit is given, that in writing, something be placed in there, so that the Hinkle Oil and Gas Company will place a permanent structure around this that will act as noise abatement. That was the first thing that I asked for. The second thing is quiet hours, as I understand it, I am not an oil, natural gas expert at all. I've done a little bit of reading, but in, uh, one of the, one of the codes, it talks about quiet hours, that when equipment is running on a temporary basis for a well like this, that there are quiet hours that have to be implemented, and those are from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So if this special use permit is given, we as neighbors in that area would like to see those quiet hours placed upon this piece of equipment as well. And Mr. Hinkle said that this piece of equipment is automated to the point where you could program it, that, that he could program it so nobody would have to come out every night, turn it off, turn it on in the morning, that that could, that that could happen quite easily. And it was again, something that he would be willing to do to help, to help the neighbors and to help property values and just kind of keep our sanity. So I, I thank you for that, but those are two very important things as a neighborhood that we would like to see implemented if this special use permit is granted. The other thing I'd like to see is that the signage around be updated, because the phone numbers and the website, the email addresses don't appear to be current. So I think those are very important things to do with current cell phone numbers, current office numbers, an email address and a website, so that if there is something that goes wrong with these equipment, we can get to a person supposed to an answering service, so.
Sure.
The, the number on the sign is correct, that goes to my office after hours. If you hit the emergency button.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, so as far as operating hours, what are your operating hours today?
I mean, I would like to do 24 hours a day. If you shut the compressor off, then the well just breaks right back into its mine. This compressor is smaller than it is, I really don't think that they'll be able to cure it once on hold up, and it's running at its normal speed. We got to find that normal speed, you know, depending on the well and how the compressor acts. But I would be very surprised if that hits her, at her house or right next door, even without sound, I mean, it's this is a small piece of equipment.
I'd like, I'd like to clarify one thing, though, you mentioned the 45 decibels. Is that your understanding that that's the code? Because isn't it 70 decibels, is what it has to stay below?
I can, I can jump in if y'all don't mind. So the 45 decibels is in the part of the code that's about oil and gas, and it has to be 45 decibels by 500 feet. But within the Unified Development Code, you can have up to 60 decibels at the wall of a home and 70 decibels. and seventy decibels at the property line.
I tested a compressor exactly like this one that I have in Kingfisher County for the decibel and, uh, it was reading sixty-five. Which is an older compressor and a little wore out and I'm standing on top of it.
And do you have any, uh, sound barriers? Well, I guess if you're standing on top of it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm right on top of it.
I totally missed that.
Five hundred feet away, I, I really couldn't see it right here.
Well, and I understand, couldn't see anybody, you know, we're, we're talking about hypothetically here. And after a year and a half, I can tell you that I would like some assurances as opposed to hypothetical. When I can hear this inside my house at two o'clock in the morning, every night, all night, twenty-four hours a day, um, I, it has to be a little more than hypothetical.
Sure. What? In our packet, it talks about things that you're willing to do to, to make it all right.
And, and if it comes through, then I can automate it to where it turns off.
Right.
I don't foresee that needed. I don't think I included anything like that in the packet. In the packet, I, I did say if needed, we'll, we'll install sound barriers.
And, and I, and I think that's where I'm at is where do we draw the line? Because there's some unknowns and I don't know if I want to make a recommendation on an unknown. And maybe, and, um, this is for us to consider, maybe it's the condition that if you can't reach the sixty-five decibels, then in fact it is on your duty to add sound barriers to mitigate the sound. Rather than saying, I know it's gonna be loud, I want you to go spend the money. Maybe we work together as good neighbors and then we, but we put that in place that when we agree to this, then we kinda, we had, kinda, we're binding to it that he has to do it.
Absolutely.
That's already in place with the ordinance, right?
Right, and then, well, it's in place with the ordinance. Um, if, if he's granted a special use permit, it's required that, um, an annual inspection take place. But as part of the staff report, we recommended that there be, um, third-party noise verification within the first thirty days of installation, um, as well as if that exceeds what is written by ordinance, that sound attenuation will also be installed within thirty days.
Okay, at what point does, do the quiet hours come into play with this?
Uh, only speaking because I'm in the oil and gas industry. Um, I, I would hesi- I mean, I would like to see, I understand the need for the lower decibel levels. I, I, I do because especially if you're gonna be in your home at night and things like that. So I, I get that. I hesitate on any kind of, um, turn the compressor off. It's just a lot more of a per- I mean, I know you could do it. It's just a lot more of a procedure when you're dealing with wells to, um, up and down the pressure on there. There's, I'm not saying it's not safety issues, but it's just, it's a, for, it's, it's, it's not, which is not ideal and it sometimes for the... So I hesitate on that part, but I do, especially if, if it can be down to a s- sound attenuation, uh, barriers and stuff. If this can be down around that fifty decibel mark, that's, I mean, my house, I walked outside the other day and I got seventy, seventy-five decibels on the, from the highway that.
My house as well. Uh, we've tested it with the whole amphitheater thing, it's, it's.
I'm like anywhere from seventy-five to eighty with the highway and, you know? So I, I get that. I just, I hesitate on the on-off deal, but I do understand the concern on the decibel level. So, um, I do like what you were saying, Jared, about just maybe that adding something about the level, uh.
Let me ask you this, ma'am.
Sure.
If, if he fixes the sound during the day, would it, would it not essentially fix the sound at night as well? If he can get it down within those decibel le- levels?
If, if the decibel levels meet the forty-five decibels at five hundred feet and we're about three hundred and fifty feet, give or take. I, I don't, I didn't get my yardstick out and measure it, although I should've because I'm a math teacher. So we're even closer than the five hundred feet. So that's what has us concerned and the Montgomerys live, you know, what, a hundred and twenty-five feet to her fence? So those levels, even if it's at sixty, sixty-five at the well, is that gonna meet those distance levels? Because if, if we're not there yet, then we're still not at code. But yes, to answer your question, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with progress. I understand that that has to happen, but I would like to see these concerns met for our neighborhood. And, um, if they can be met, then fine. But if, if they can't be met and we have to put some kind of a noise abatement building around this or we have to run with quiet hours, it's been wonderful Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Sunday night. Um, I do appreciate that you did show it off.
It was supposed to shut itself off and then.
Right.
Yeah, it had to.
And the difference, you know, the difference Bobby, that it made having those three evenings when, when you completely shut that compressor off in the neighborhood, just right there within our triangle of houses. It, it was pretty astounding the difference that it made just in the, the level of noise. So having heard that, the fact that it did shut off for those, what, ten or twelve hours that you shut it off? It, that was very encouraging. The fact that there can be a way for us to all get what we need, um, and come up with an, with a very equitable solution for everybody.
Have you, go ahead.
How many feet did you say approximately from?
Three hundred and fifty.
And what's the code today?
Five hundred feet, forty-five decibels from the piece of equipment.
Have you ever tested the decibels of these gas pumps?
Of, of this compressor?
Uh, some gas compressor, yeah.
Not of this one, but one just like it that I have in Kingfisher County. And not the sixty-five decibels right on top.
Okay.
And at two hundred, three hundred and fifty feet, you, you don't know?
I, I did not test.
But it would be pretty easy to build a sound attenuation wall.
I'm sorry?
It would be pretty easy to build a sound attenuation wall and y'all would be willing to do that?
And the wall, please understand, um, that, you know, there's properties both to the west and to the east. So we're in the Von Elm subdivision, but, um, Brock Robinson is on the other side, who's on the west side, also has a property. So we'd have to find some kind of a way to resolve that sound attenuation for all of the neighbors.
Well, if it shot towards, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
Yeah.
If it shot towards, I mean, if it was directed towards Wagner Road, that's, that's, I was gonna say, cause there's nobody across the street over there on that one. Right, right. Yeah, that definitely helps.
Well, thank you.
That's all I have.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here that wants to speak on that item? Yes, ma'am?
Linda Lance, LANTZ, forty-eight oh one Sky Trail Avenue, UConn. Okay, so actually about the noise, uh, World Health Organization recommend, recommends nighttime noise levels below forty decibels. And according to the latest research by, uh, Earthworks, this is gas fires have noise levels of one forty-four. So you definitely want electric, electric if it's, uh, noise mitigated. Can drop it to a hundred and two with the potential of reaching around fifty-five decimals.
What size of pressure do you book?
It does not say.
That's probably a very large pressure.
So if it can get it down to fifty-five with mitigation, then a four-cylinder, you should be able to get it a lot lower. Okay.
Under fifty-five?
I could.
Okay.
Like I said, uh, sixty-five, seven on top of it.
And that's the one you have in place right now?
In Kingfisher.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so the basic mitigation is a hundred and two, but with, you know, potentially higher mitigation, fifty-five on a lot, I guess a larger unit.
Yeah.
So.
I don't know exactly what I can get it down to. There's just something we'd have to, have to turn it on and see.
Well, and we're already kinda breaking the ordinances by being closer than five hundred feet.
Mind you, this is going to the tank battery, not next to your house at the well side.
Right.
You know, that's, you shouldn't hear any of that.
I need my grass mowed?
Yeah, no, I know. My guys are making their rounds.
Okay. People ask why I live to a pump, I grew up next to a pump. So my other concern is emissions from electric national, uh, electric natural gas compressors. I know that gas operated, you know, leak methane and blowout methane and all that bit. But my concern is also the electric compressors also have their own, uh, toxins, uh, particulate matter, nitrous oxides, volatile organic compounds, combustion products, sulfur dioxide. All of these create health problems anywhere from cancer to asthma. So, yeah, and most of it, it says here, and this is written by, oh. Okay, says in summary, they might eliminate direct emissions associated with burning flu- fuel, but the potential for leaks, venting and compression byproducts from operation means electric national, natural gas compressors can still pose environmental and health risks due to the emissions of various toxics. And this was written by Environmental Health Project and US Energy Information.
The only emissions that come from it would be natural gas that I'm pouring from the well.
Okay.
If I had any of that natural gas in the gas co- it'd shut me off.
Okay, but when you do blow downs or if you have leaks.
Blow into the tank, I mean, it's, but it's natural gas.
So it's not going to?
Not what you're talking about.
This, this is electric, natural gas compressor.
The only thing that I'm compressing is natural gas from my well.
Right, and that's what this is referring to.
I've never.
So this is reported also by Petersburg Compression Station with natural gas. This is Petersburg Compression Nation, Station. And it has to deal with electric natural gas compressions.
Okay, my well doesn't make nitrogen dioxide.
It says potential.
The gas company does not buy nitrogen or sulfur dioxide. If, if any of that was coming from my well, it'd shut me off.
They would shut you off.
And the compressor can't make anything. I mean, it's.
But this is.
The gas that comes out of the well.
Says here, well, primary composed of methane, so you agree with the methane?
I'm not sure what that's from or what.
The natural gas compressor.
I'm not sure what you're getting at or.
I'm getting this from.
My compressor can't make anything. All that's doing is compressing what comes in.
But the tox-
If any of that stuff came into it and I put it down in the castle and it would shut me off.
Yeah, but these are the fuels and the water that is used in fracking and then come through with the gas and you compress it. So this is what's, when you re- release the pressure. Okay, so this is mixed with your gas.
There, there's no nitrogen in my gas.
Have you tested it? Okay.
The gas company was by any of that stuff.
Okay, cause this is the research I did, um, I don't know what to say then.
How, how old is this well? It's, it's.
I believe it was drilled in seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, so.
And then operated with seventy-two.
Uh, the older a well gets, sometimes you're talking, a lot of times right after a, a well is fracked or things like that. There can be other stuff coming up, but that's, this has been there so long that.
So are you talking about the pump next to my house?
Am I talking about?
So where's this coming from? A new fracking or?
No, we're not fracking here.
No.
No, I'm saying, is this compressor hooked up to a machine that's older? Is that what he's saying?
No, that, I'm saying that would've happened on maybe a well, some of that may come up when a well was first fracked or something like that. You have some things and they have better things in place now that capture that, but that is not on an older well. It's already long gone after that, yeah.
Okay.
It's natural gas going.
Okay, and what about the, uh, requirement for water to keep it cool while you're compressing it?
Uh, it's air-cooled.
Is air-cooled, okay. Okay, so that's different than what?
Yeah, yeah, that sounds like a much larger compressor.
Well, the pictures show a lot larger picture. It definitely does, so.
I understand, yeah, he's right. That, that, that sounds like stuff that would happen from the well when you're in the first fracturing.
Okay. Okay, so the. Okay, what about vibration?
There should be vibration.
Okay.
I mean, if you're standing on it, you're gonna feel it. Other than that, you're five feet away from it.
Yeah, my sister, when she goes to bed at night, can feel vibration.
Your sister?
Yeah, but she lives in Piedmont. She's got a compression station which is west of her.
Much, much larger compressor, once again.
Okay. Yeah, I went by and saw it. It's currently not fenced. I was gonna play with the buttons, but I decided not to.
I don't think that's a good idea.
Well, there's emergency, there's emergency stop on it.
Okay.
There's emergency stop and I wanted to stop until I found out, you know?
Okay. Alright.
So, yeah, it's currently not fenced. You can push emergency stop and go.
And that compressor, you saw the, the one that was running?
Yeah, the little one.
That's not gonna be the permanent one.
Right.
The, the blue one that's inside the fence will be the permanent one.
Okay.
You should feel no vibration unless you stand up.
Okay, okay. So this is a woman speaking. Are the tanks gonna be painted and kinda cleaned up and the fence ain't gonna be? I took pictures, you know, the debris on the side and.
We tried to keep it clean, but, uh, my, my grandpa always said that, uh, put paint on it, don't think it'd make any more of the gas.
I got a five gallon bucket of paint that you can have.
I am working on that actually. I think my sons are probably gonna paint it.
Yeah, and actually the ordinances require that the tanks be upcapped and, and painted and the sign is readable and.
Sign should be readable.
Well, not on the tank, but you do have a nice sign on the fence.
Yeah.
I will grant you that, so, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
By now, when those tanks are set, those are aluminum, uh, paint.
Yeah.
That would be kinda ugly, I know, hanging aluminum, it's kinda blind.
We can do a mural on them.
Can we wrap this up, guys? We need to keep moving, we have other things going. Thank you. Do you guys have anything else? The conditions, are, I mean, are we okay with this?
Hang on a second.
Yes, sir. I'm so sorry, sir. Thought we were done.
My name is Brock Robinson. Live at sixteen sixteen East Wagner. I own the property that the well sits on, the wellhead plus the tank battery.
Different well.
The one.
The well that you're talking about, that's different.
I got you.
Um, I think a lot of this really was a big misunderstanding, a lot, maybe a lack of information. Like, I mean, a lot of the neighbors, you look up compressor station, way bigger than anything we thought of. The one he's got sitting there is maybe the size of two of those chairs. It is an electric one. You can hear it quite a bit more in the neighborhood than you can at my house. My house is two hundred and fifty feet away, but I have a tree line in between me and the compressor station itself. That is one thing, I mean, I think it's one of the deals we need to work together. I mean, I built a fence on my property and I left you that well completely uncovered. Like, I've squared off a good, you can see it in the overhead picture, to where they could still access their well. I didn't build a fence straight across. I went all the way around it, left all the anchor points out, everything like that for your company. I think if we work together, find some common ground, it needs to be lower than what it is for the neighborhood. I mean, that.
But the compressor that's sitting there now is quite loud. That's not the permanent one.
Yeah.
The one that will be.
The blue one, yeah, I've seen that.
And like I said, it's, it's very much.
I mean, I bought that property kinda be on the edge of the city, not have a bunch of noise, stuff like that. Take my wife and kid out there and, I mean, it's not something I like listening to all the time. But I understand we're moving in the right direction. Would like to see the sound barrier put up just to make it even a little bit quieter for the neighborhood. I mean, you have two houses over there within a hundred feet of it.
I think we would agree and the staff has come up with some good conditions to go along with it. To be fair, you know, a lot of these questions we've been asking, staff is already ahead of this. And, and I think, you know, we all agree with noise. I mean, to the point of Commissioner Geis and I with seventy-plus DBs, you know, just in our front yard.
Hundred percent.
At ten o'clock in the night from the highway, that's us, you know? So we definitely wanna make the right moves and I'll be honest with you guys, you know, that are in here speaking on this. We don't always get good people that, on the other side that wanna work with you. So you're lucky that, that he will work with you on this, so.
No, I wanna work together and find common ground. It's just, I want it to be right for my neighbors too. And it's not fair to them have, open the house on a Sunday, they're trying to sell a house and that's all you hear going on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brock.
Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers who were not able to be here tonight.
Yes, sir.
Uh, they did want their name for the record. Uh, one was Jimmy Wilkerson, who was opposed to, uh, the compressor. And Adele Regir, who lives at eleven fifty-four Elk Street, was opposed as well. That's just for the record.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, back to you guys.
Uh, do you mind? I don't know if everybody out there knows the different conditions that have been set on here. Do you mind if I read those?
Go for it, yeah.
Okay, the first one is noise compliance. Noise levels shall not exceed seventy decibels at the property line in accordance with UDC four oh six, four point two. If they exceed seventy decibels or if substantiated complaints are received, applicant shall install sound mitigation measures. This is. install sound mitigation measures, as you said, you're going to go ahead and, and stuff?
No, I can, I can go ahead, plan on...
Is that something that if we, if we put, if we put that in there, that sound mitigation things will be installed? You're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably within the first thirty days of having one.
Okay. Yeah, it says such as acoustic fencing or sound dampening walls within thirty days, okay?
So, timeout there, 'cause I'm a little confused. A minute ago, you said that it's forty-five and it's seventy...
That's at five hundred feet, this is at the property line.
At the property line.
Yeah, it's kind of confusing because there's three different sound levels that we have to deal with here, so, it's seventy decibels at the property line of a given residence, sixty decibels at the wall of a home, forty-five decibels five hundred feet away from the compressor.
So it's an assumption of all three?
Yes.
So when, even in our most, even in our conditions, we're, we're talking about the seventy Ds, but it's DBs, but it's an assumption, the sixty and forty-five is afterwards?
So does that need to be added to the conditions, is my point?
It's, it's already ordinance...
It's a part of that, UDC, yeah.
I think what they're saying is, is that if he can abide by the sound code or the sound decibels, then this is the force, he's saying he's gonna do it anyways, but at least we have it in writing, 'cause he could walk out and not do it, you know what I mean? But I think that's the point for the citizens, let's make it right for them. Does that make sense, guys?
And then there's also, uh, within thirty days of this, there has to be a third-party licensed acoustic engineer that will confirm decibels, um, no expansion use, can't add anything else to that, it's this, it's what we're talking about, that one compressor, and then compliance with all the other regulations, which is all that stuff that we're talking about, so that's all included in the conditions on this, so, just so everybody knows, sometimes it's hard if you don't know what's been added.
And we're an advisory board, council still has to seize this too, so...
That's a good question.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Is that, I appreciate those permissions, thank you for that, what, is there anything regarding applying the sound, um, the sound to quiet our speed? It's still our home, I just, they're still our homes, is that a possibility to put in there, um, if, if we're still having issues six months down the road?
I feel pretty comfortable that if we can get it down with, you know, the, the, um, the, uh, the rules, if you will, the, the rules set forth in, in, in the, from the staff, I think that it would fix that problem, so, I mean, just for me, I'm not, I'm not really wanting to make changes to the hours, um, just 'cause I think if we get it right with the sound, then it won't, it'll be all for nothing, and then I think that's better for, you know, for the well too, so...
Should it be moved or rolled farther over a white crumple?
I don't know, what, what you guys feel about the hours, but we can always, you know, consider that if that's the case.
Can we say that considering what this compressor is considered versus workover operations? What, if that is related to, like, perhaps that code should be at least looked at?
I think some of that code, I believe, I think, I know what you're talking, I think it's if there was something on a temporary basis, but this is gonna be more of a permanent, this is a permanent basis, it has to happen so it can come in, so I get that, again, I, I just, knowing some of the oil and gas industry stuff, I, I would hate to ever, it's just not conducive to the well atmosphere of it, but, I, again, I understand the sound, which I think all these other things are gonna help, yeah, not conducive, yeah, which I think all these sayings, like I said, um, uh, my wife would say I sleep too much like a baby, even with sound outside from inside my home with the sound from the highway, so...
Dakota, do you guys have anything? Just seems like y'all...
We're, we're just trying to determine if it applies to, if that, what, what the citizen is bringing up applies specifically to drilling or to continual production and work.
There's a section in the code that says workover operations shall be performed only between the hours of seven AM and six o'clock PM, but this is not workover operations. Right, that's the way I interpret it as well.
Well, good lord, I'd hope so. You don't want that. Yeah, I bet, yeah.
It's temporary.
All right, gentlemen. In the case of the conditional use permit application for a natural gas compressor by Hinkle Oil and Gas Incorporated, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval with the following additional conditions. Number one, noise compliance, noise levels shall not exceed seventy DB at the property line in accordance with, uh, UDC four oh six, four two. If levels exceed seventy DB or if substantiated complaints are received, the applicant shall install sound mitigation measures such as acoustic fencing or sound dampening walls within thirty days of verification. Number two, verification of sound levels, within thirty days of equipment operation, the applicant shall submit a certified sound report from a licensed acoustic engineer demonstrating compliance with noise standards. Number three, no expansion of use, special use permit applies only to the proposed compressor described in the application and shall not authorize expansion of other equipment, structures, or drilling activity without additional approval. Number four, compliance with all applicable regulations, the applicant shall comply with all relevant municipal codes, building codes, Oklahoma Corporate Commission regulations, and ODEQ environmental standards. Do I have a second?
A second.
Call the vote, please.
Wright?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Good luck with your project. All right, moving on to item number seven. To hear requests from Brighton Capital LLC for simplified planned unit development spud at nine one two West Port Boulevard, and who's here to speak on that this evening? Actually, is there anybody here, like, other than a, a visitor to speak on it? I just wanna make sure we heard from them first, but I guess nobody's here to speak on that, so, you're up?
Seven, five fifteen Maple. Okay, here's my concern with this. The street goes into a neighborhood, so, you've got the traffic thing going on, and I think, right now, I think it's proposed for two curb, curb cuts, not just one.
You are correct.
Okay, why can't you just do one curb cut to the southernmost part of the property and then connect the driveway with Vitality Mill? Because, you know, the city's been, in the past, has been a little curb cut happy and...
Not under our watch. They'd bribe somebody to curb cut.
You think curb, curb, curb cut happy, and do, do we really want to continue down that? I think everybody's working so hard now to do it right. Let's, I mean, this is just common sense, there's a cut here, extend that parking lot, put a next cut, the next curb cut to the south of that property, so when the lot next to it gets developed, the same thing can happen, and then a curb cut on Vandeman. This isn't rocket science, and...
No, the comprehensive plan agrees with you on this, so you, you hit the, you hit the nail on the hammer.
Because all I can think about is, I just think, you know, everybody grunts about Garth Brooks, and, you know, curb cut, curb cut, curb cut, and there's, let's, let's start by doing the right thing now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wish I could answer those questions for you, but nobody's here to speak on it, so... Is there anybody else here that wants to speak on this item? So, there was a lot of unchecked boxes, if you will, on this application, so staff has, uh, so, here's our, uh, our motion, in the case, let's see, no? Yes, ma'am?
I would like to speak.
Come on.
I personally don't understand what PUD is. Can you explain that to me? I own the property next door, so...
Can you please state your name and...
Mary Whitby, one four eight four five Flint Drive.
So the spud is a, what's the acronym?
Social Side Plan Unit Development.
I don't understand, uh, is it going to take up more property or...
Basically, ma'am, what those are is it's a way for them to come and change some of the rules, and it's a give or take with the city, so, they don't wanna operate within what it's already zoned, they want to make some changes to that, so, it's essentially their way of coming to the city and making a negotiation, if you will, this is very common, um, all over the country. But these changes, they don't have all of it in, in order, if you will, so there's a lot of unknowns, we just, we can't answer that at this point.
Well, since it's going to be abutting my property, I would like to know how much of the property they're going to...
We would too, we just don't know, because, again, it's not complete.
Well, what's the difference?
We're gonna table it tonight.
What's the difference in, in commercial and, and PUD?
Well, nothing, it's just a overlay, if you will, of, of an existing zone, it's just, again, it's you're taking a commercial zone and you're changing the rules slightly to fit the need of, of what they wanna do.
Well, what are the rules?
They were wanting to change it to where you could do some sort of warehousing too, to where they could have some in the warehouse, but again, we don't know because we don't have all of the, the information, we're not gonna vote on this tonight, we're gonna table it until the next meeting, if these gentlemen agree with me to table it.
Okay.
Anybody else? So with that being said, they didn't complete everything, I make a motion to table this until the next regular plan, commission meeting.
Is, was the only, oh, yeah, I'm gonna get the second. I was just gonna ask if, is, so, is, what were the things, just so we can have in our deal, I, I, I read through it, I was trying to make sense, I know, like, missing one parking lot or parking space, that was one thing, um, but the curb cuts and all that stuff is...
So there was some, whenever we was going through the application, reviewing the staff report, there were some discrepancies in, in, in there where we wanted to have it understood of what exactly he was wanting to do, one of them, he talks about having retail, well, obviously, retail's allowed in, in the current zoning, but trying to say, well, what kind of retail, 'cause whenever he explained to me the project when we first came in, was like he just wanted like an office warehouse, similar to what is existing at Brighton Circle, is similar to what he's wanting, um, but then he's talking about retail, and so Dakota and I had some conversations, and we're like, okay, yeah, there's some more information that's needed here, and he wasn't able to get it to us prior to the meeting.
Because that, that retail should fall within what it's owned to.
Correct, exactly right.
But he's asked for a special permit.
Exactly right, and that's why we was like, well, it's allowed, so what, what a part of retail are you wanting that wouldn't be allowed, and I'm guessing it's some sort of warehouse, like an electrician to store equipment and things like that, kinda like our office warehouse, is kinda what he explained to me initially.
So assuming, or if we did table this tonight or some, is, there's something you guys can do to go back and talk about, 'cause again, the extra curb cut is something that we, we try to limit, is there something that we can do or you can, um, mention or start the process already, 'cause I'd hate for them to do all the work and then come back and also be like, ah, you know what, that's an extra curb cut, we don't want that, you know?
Yeah, we can definitely have that conversation.
And I would like to see, to this lady's point about the curb cuts anyways, is let's, let's see what's across the street, let's see what's next door too, that helps a little more when we can, 'cause I know we've got the variety carrying, and we've got that Salazar building that's going in across the street, so, it would be very important, we had lots of questions tonight, so I wish, you know, so, but that's okay, so... Any, are you guys good? Any more questions? So we have a motion and a second, call the vote, please.
Clark?
Yes. To, to table it, yes.
Table it, yes.
Motion is to table. Jones?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Geis?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes. Moving on to item number eight, discussion, consideration, and possible action to recommend adoption of an ordinance to men Article Three by adding section two one five dash three one zero data centers, is that you again?
You guys enjoy seeing me on this side, don't you? So this ordinance came about after several months back, they had a, um, addition to the, to this use table for data centers as a special use permit, however, there wasn't anything in the ordinance to discuss of how that should be developed, so then there's questions of, well, if this does come about, how are we gonna be able to regulate this to where it protects the city, it protects the citizens, and, and of that nature, and so we talked with Tulsa and Oklahoma City and a few other cities in the area just to understand what they were doing, and then with Roger's help, we had some, uh, language put together, uh, for the, to have a data center, should one come in, 'cause those are a popular thing across Oklahoma right now, it seems, and it's something that I honestly didn't know a whole lot about until a few months ago, and we was looking at this and trying to think of what if, and, uh, learned quite a bit from, from Tulsa and Rogers County, so, uh, this is what the ordinance is, just to provide some guidelines, should, should that, should a data center ever decide to, to locate in the area that isn't one planned by any stretch of the imagination, it is just being preemptive on, on what we, what we wanna do moving forward, should one come in.
So, I'm sorry, you said Roger, he's the one that put this together, wrote it?
Uh, Roger and I both did, really.
Yeah, I did not, I reviewed it, I did not write it.
Oh, you were gonna give him all the credit.
I was.
Okay, that was actually one of my questions, like, where did this come from?
I did review.
Through, through a lot of research.
Yeah. It's very thorough.
Yep.
I have a question, though, and, you know, I did my own very mild research on data centers, 'cause you hear horror stories, where does water usage fall into this?
So normally with data centers, they, they, they like to use regular water coming in, and then they'll also use gray water, that's not really anything that we have in place in the city yet, uh, the council debated that a little bit, um, when was it, about a month ago, that they talked about the, being able to use gray water, so that's something that is being looked at, there's nothing in place currently to use gray water, but a lot of data centers will use that gray water for the cooling and things like that.
Gray water being, obviously, I mean, so, doesn't know, treated water that is not going to be used, non-potable water.
Yes, bingo, exactly right, yes, it's not, yeah, it's not the, no.
Well, the theory of what they do is fine, but I mean with the code, because, should there be something, and I guess this is where I'm at, it's like I hear horror stories about the water uses of these data centers, and I understand the point of this, and this is to kinda cover our backside to make sure that when they do come in, we're not fighting as much, we're kinda like, this is the code, if you wanna change the code, it's already there, but what can be put in code? I've never seen anything about water in any type of code like this.
I have neither.
It's more about usage and, and facilities, you know, the, the buildings and stuff, so, hypothetical, what if we can't accommodate the water? I mean, is that something that gets turned down by the city down the road? You understand what I'm saying? Do we need to do more research, or, or by doing this, if we have, we sign the check, you know what I mean? If, if in fact it happens, 'cause at the end of the day, if they, if you wanna sell this land to them, then, you know, we've already, already rezoned it, we've already put this in place, so...
Right, and so if, if, if a data center was to come in, obviously, they'd have to come through and do permitting and things like that, and part of that in, also incorporates water and sewer, and what, if we have the capacity or what we need to do to, to bring that capacity to, to whatever area of any development, and that's where Arnold's crew and our crew would get together, uh, of something we recently started, to, to have that discussion, so just because we have this ordinance, this ordinance just helps provide some development guidelines, and whenever it come, should it ever come in, then it, that's when we had to have that conversation of water usage, and would we be able to have it or not, and if we can't, and there's no way for it, I, I don't, I would imagine the project would be turned down, I've had to turn projects down at a previous city that we didn't have the water capacity, and so there was no way for it to work.
This is like over at Ranchwood, when they were wanting to talk about putting that back there, and we were concerned about the sewage pipes and being able to handle all that, and the deal was it has to go through the process of doing all the, the water and the sewage and all that stuff, and that has to be approved first, so... So my, the assumption would be then that all that has to go through the city, it has to be approved through us, so it's not something that can just jump out and surprise us, like...
Bingo.
Oh, wait, now we have to, yeah, okay.
Correct, yes, they'd still have to come through and, and do permitting and, and do all that, that type of thing, and, and include the, um, water and, and all that as well.
There's an ordinance that covers that.
Right. Okay. So there was an ordinance adopted in April of this year. Says an ordinance providing amendments to the code of ordinances of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending sections one fourteen thirty-four and one fourteen thirty-five. By establishing high volume user water surcharges, creating gray water billing rates subject to city council approval. Adding a gray water maintenance fee, clarifying multi meter aggregation for billing purposes. Revising commercial water rate tiers and limiting gray water service based on availability.
Can you like type that out real quick? Print it so we can read. It sounds good. I mean, did you guys?
Your, your question is not uncommon when it comes to high water use, that's what we call these. And when they apply for the permit or so forth, at that time is when it's studied to see if it's going to affect. There's several different ways of doing that with even drilling wells and the lumeal sands to provide water. They can provide their own water on the land. They can do, uh, gray water out the back of the plant. We can provide the water due to city and normal circumstance. So they can store it onsite. We do that way. So there's several different ways of doing that. This is just simply jumping out in front. And if this does get, I mean, it goes on all over the country now.
Well, I mean. Well, this is just to, what I'm about to say is strictly I've heard through the grapevine, but there's a lot of rumors going around town that there's a data center going in out there. And it may go in south of five forty. I, I think I get what we're, where we're going is let's protect ourselves. See if in fact, in case it does come our way. But again.
There's three things to get what I've learned in the last ten weeks. There's three things to go in one of these areas. Land, water and power. If you don't have any one of those, it doesn't work.
And they have a substation one hundred and sixty-six. So. Okay.
Anyway, it's really the forethought of, and to my knowledge, there's been five or six inquiries over the last several years in property all around the county, not just here. So just seeing the, the action and everything's going on, we just want to make sure that if something like that comes up, we're ready.
Correct. I think that's kind of what we're doing with some of the special use permit changes too, is we wanted to be ready for any kind of changes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
That's the, that's one of the things that this council is great at is the forethought, forethought, thinking of how and trying to be prepared for, you know, anything that's coming.
Daniel and, or Jeffy, the one. But wouldn't be even possibly, we'd be better served if we held off and they could still come in and, and apply for a special use permit, right? Then we would actually have more control over what we approved, right? And, and the reason I say that is got to do some research and Atlanta finally said, we're doing a moratorium on them in certain deals. And one of the reasons they did, they required developers now to build data centers to, to obtain a special use permit from the city, giving them more oversight and control over these projects. I'm just saying, rather than just kind of, and this is a bad word, but green lighting it, they still would have an avenue to get that approved. But wouldn't we be able to address more of the specifics of that particular project?
That is possible. Um, the only potential issue with that, with not having anything in the code at all that addresses data centers. It would be hard to say, well, what, what is your, what is the reason for a special use permit? What would, what guidelines would they have to follow? Cause a lot of the special use permitted uses in the code have additional stringent guidelines with that. And data centers don't have anything.
Wouldn't that allow us to put conditions in that?
We could, and that's kind of where that ordinance is going is, is providing that, that backup, that code that, that they'd have to follow.
It, and I gotta ask this, is, is this ordinance to be more attractive for a data center to come? Or is it to protect us? Cause I'm, I'm with you, right? Like we, we don't know what we don't know, right?
Right.
And if we pass this ordinance and it happens, then, and we find some things, well, we can't change it at that point. But we can have more controllability on a, on a PED.
You could, yeah. For a PED, you'd have a, you potentially have some more control. Um, again, with the, with the ordinance, it, I, I feel like it would provide at least a, a frame that, that we could use to, to guide that development should it occur.
That's how I look at it. I look at this as a leg to stand on. For it's kind of like the wild, wild west, right? If you wanted to come in and put in a data center, you could come in and we could just be doing circles. What happens if the three of us are off next, next year, right? You know what I mean? Like if this is done and we all agree on this and we had help from staff and our attorney, then they've got to come and argue this. So.
It's kind of like the, the, and I know some people have issue with, about the Airbnb or the, the short term rental. Sorry, short term rental that we, uh, you know, some people were complaining about it before that we were passing something, but it gave us teeth, something to say, here's this. And now we can still require some other things. These, I don't know if anybody's looked at these. It took, it took me a while to keep going through this thing. There's a lot of well thought out, I think restrictions, and you guys spoke with a lot of people about this that have these in place and things.
That's the key.
Yeah.
Is that because of the popularity and, uh, just the ramifications of every one of your great questions. This has been researched from other areas that have been successful at that time of putting these restrictions in. So it's a, it's an accommodation of what's coming. That's not going to be an all inclusive.
Sure. Well, it reminds me of the dispensaries. It was coming. We had no idea. So we had to get ahead of it. I wasn't a part of it back then, but they got ahead of it. And, and I remember when Yukon and Mustang were writing their two different codes. My boss was the mayor in, in Mustang in completely different codes, but everybody was getting ahead of it. So I think that, uh, it's very similar, I guess.
That's exactly what this is. It's the forethought of, you know, it's happening. Who knew that land is a pretty good spot? I, you know, all of those things. And I mean, there are people, we're getting all private land owners up all around this whole Canadian county being hit up for some type of building of this nature. So.
Sure.
It's our way of getting ahead of this habit. And there's nothing says we can't change that as we're going through.
Yeah. What is?
It's just something as, as the framework to make the use. And people like to deal. People of, like deal with people that are ahead of the game and on the, you know, on the money, all of that good stuff. That's who people like to deal with. So that's where we're at in this process.
So I gotta ask this question. Maybe it's weird, but, uh, light duty industrial versus this ordinance, what's the difference?
Say that one more time. I'm sorry.
Light duty industrial versus this ordinance that's proposed to it. What are the, the commons and what are the district, the, the differences?
As far as between the special use permit and the permitted use or the?
No, no, the permit that we're looking, the ordinance that we're looking to implement here, what are the difference? What's the difference between this ordinance and light duty commercial?
I think, well, the, it's, it's permit, like data centers are permitted in light duty.
Sure.
So they're already permitted. This is just saying, here's.
What are the ordinance though, if we don't have this in a light duty industrial versus what we're proposing today is my.
I think would it just be the generic things are in light duty? Like we wouldn't have. These are, these are a lot more.
So this is, so that's more a lot.
Yes. Yes. And for the, and for the commercials, sorry, I was, wasn't following the conversation. The, for the commercials, it's not allowed at all.
Okay.
So that's where that comes in. Cause it's only, the, the original ordinance that was approved by council was for special use permit only in I one. That was it. There wasn't.
Okay. So, okay, understood.
You can't even get a special use permit in commercial for one.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Anybody else in the audience want to speak on this?
I have read it all. Stephanie Bird, I'm five fifteen Maple. Okay. First off, I think I might be going the same place he is. How can this even be considered light industrial with the sinful amount of energy and water that these places use? Not to mention with passage of, uh, Senate bill four eighty. And diesel in, diesel generators are mentioned in here. How is that the best use for any land Yukon owns or could sell? To let something that's going to suck all the water and all the power we have. And then possibly generate all this information with a diesel generator. You know, they smell so good and they're so quiet. So that I have a concern over that, just how it could be even considered light industrial. And I don't think what I'm asking is, I think somebody else, then Danielle, can you please explain where it says item two designated land use? Where the, any agricultural, residential, school, park, hospital are place of worship. So does that mean these rules apply to those places?
Let me find that real quick. Sorry.
It's on, um, section C, number two. Which would be the third page.
Oh no, that's just a, what did you ask about designated land use and public, that's just definitions.
Yeah, that's a definition.
Right. So that's, that's what I wanted. That explained what exactly that meant. Then. You did a great job on this too, by the way.
I might be able to clarify a couple of points. You've asked about light industrial and what that definition in the intent section of the code. It says the, the intent of the light industrial district is to provide a location for industries which do not by their nature create nuisances. And for commercial uses that either due to the nature of their operation are best located in I one light industrial district or are either supportive or compatible or not detrimental to the industrial activities allowed. So it's one that by their nature do not create nuisances.
Okay. But I think we could all agree that a diesel generator to power something that large would be a nuisance. I mean, just the sound they would make and the smell.
I believe, I think the power generators are only in case of power fault.
Well, either way, they have to apply for.
They can only test them and this, they have to meet.
It's just included, but not limited to diesel generators, natural gas, turbines, fuel cells.
Right.
So this is including everything that can make one run.
As backup power. Right.
Well, it doesn't say backup, but it says.
They have to meet EPA tier four too.
And then I just want to make sure that on permitted, that's dealing with the barriers and all. Brick, stone or composite material walls. Sure. That means nothing that could rot, correct?
Correct. That was the idea of having something that would, uh, that would be a barrier to it, but it would not cause anything as far as it'd be something that would be easily maintained.
Okay. And then on item J, design statement, project description, including list of owners and our developers with contact information, including email address. So if somebody's going to do this, they have to disclose all this information to the general public?
This would have to be provided to, uh, staff and then it would be a public records request at that point. Whenever they come in for a building permit, that would be part of the information.
Okay. So we have to wait till a building permit's applied for before we find out who wants to do all this and all the rumors with all the NDAs going around, people are signing.
Now remember, remember this is like any other plan that we have all over the city. It just happens to be a hot button topic because of where it's at. There's no other, there's no different process than there is on any other property or anything, any building. So if it's, if it's defined as a nuisance, it will not be allowed.
Okay. Then my last question is Danielle's gone to all this trouble and done such a great job. Does, uh, Senate bill four eighty that's passed, I guess November first will be the law. Does it supersede any of this because the state law will supersede our laws? Senate bill four eighty, did I say eight forty? I meant to say four eighty. That is the no bear that, that lets them put generators. The property owners put their own generators to not have to pay fuel taxes. So they can generate their own power to make these things run. That law, what's in that law. Will it supersede anything that we do or have put all this effort Danielle's done? Is it gonna null and void any of that? I would think that would need to be checked out and that's what I thank you for.
Yes ma'am. Thank you. Okay. Yes ma'am.
All right. Well. Um, I keep hearing when it comes on the data centers.
Sorry, can you, can you state your name please? I'm sorry.
Julia C, six oh five Kingston Place. In all the discussion, I keep hearing when the days, when the data center comes or when it comes instead of if it comes. And I'm hoping that that's not because of a, a non disclosure agreement that is keeping us from knowing everything. But I, I'm, uh, I want to go through a list of things. And there are a lot of reasons not to have a, a data center. There's lots of evidence that we will have short term use, long term cost. Data centers typically operate only 10 to 15 years before becoming obsolete. Tax incentives often last 20 plus years, leaving taxpayers paying long after the facility is gone. Taxpayer burden, massive infrastructure upgrades, electric, water, roads often required and paid for by residents. When the data center leaves, upkeep and debt remain with the city and its taxpayers. Minimal local benefit, very few permanent jobs once construction is complete. These facilities do little to grow the local economy compared to other types of development. High resource consumption, consumption and rationing risks. Data centers use enormous amounts of, of water and electricity to keep running 24/7. In other cities, residents were promised these projects wouldn't affect them, but later faced electricity and water rationing due to resource strain. I mean rationing. The people end up sacrificing basic services while the company continues full operations. Many communities are left with empty, decaying buildings after the companies move on. Promised economic gains often fail to materialize. Cities have reported higher utility rates, depleted resources and no lasting benefits to residents. There's a lack of transparency. The reports of NDAs, uh, non disclosure agreements being used in Oklahoma to keep key details from the public. Citizens deserve, deserve full disclosure before decisions are made, not secrecy. And this secrecy is not what the people voted for when they elected their representatives. And I do have from a FOIA request, um, from the city of Luther, they did. We've got the non disclosure agreement and we, we've got a FOIA request in, um, for Yukon, but haven't heard back. So, um, but the, I mean, Mays County, Oklahoma in 2023. Their water usage was eight hundred and fifteen million gallons of water. We can't, we can't sustain that. That doesn't make sense. It is a monster and it is a boogeyman and we need to just say no. And I've got lots more information to back up those points.
Yes ma'am. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing that there's no further discussion. We've read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves, what?
I got a question, a couple of questions.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, go ahead.
So Daniel, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around some of these numbers and stuff like that. So. Approving these two ordinances versus requiring them to do a special use permit. Does approving these ordinances make it easier for a data center to come in or more difficult? Will we have more control with a special use permit or approving this ordinance?
So by doing the approving of the ordinance, you're allowing it to be, uh, to for. So by doing the approving of the ordinance, you're allowing it to be, uh, to for a data center to come in by right? And they'd have to adhere to all of these standards as well as our standards for water and they'd have to work with OGN power, we don't have control over that piece. But, um, they would have to work with OGN to make sure that that would meet their needs and it wouldn't cause impact on, on the rest of the residents. Now, as far as making it more difficult, I don't think, by having the ordinance, we're making it a little easier in the sense that we're providing those guidelines ahead of time, instead of having a special use permit and then winging it on, well, we like this, we don't like that. Um, now your special use permit, you guys do have that ability to, to add certain conditions and things like that. And, and if there's something in the ordinance that you guys would like to add, we'd be happy to, to entertain that. So, but that's kinda where we're at and what we're looking at is, is as far as, it wouldn't make it harder necessarily because you're allowing it by right to, as long as they follow these guidelines. Now, if they wanna do something different than what is allowed by, by the ordinance, should it pass, then they'd have to come back and do some sort of PUD or BOA for variance or whatever the circumstance was.
Okay. And the reason I ask that, cause when I started, after I got some negative input today, quite a bit, which I understand, but when I did my own research, I thought, you know, Atlanta, that's why they went to special use, because they had more control. And it just appears to me on the surface that us having more control through a special use permit is better for us. That's just, is the way I understand it right now. So am I sorta right? I mean, Atlanta, that's what they came up with, but that didn't mean they're right.
Let me ask you this, if, if somebody did come and they applied for a special use, do you think you would be stricter than this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would ask.
Thank you, answered your question then, you know what I mean?
I would, the reason being is because I would be able to address specifics and ask them questions. Right now, we don't have anybody to ask questions. And we do know non-disclosure agreements are in place right now. I mean, not made with us, but with, with other places. And so, uh, I just think it gives us more control, and again, I'm at a very infantile stage on this.
Right.
So, and, and the reason I thought about that, and then when I verified it through Atlanta, uh, I don't know that we wouldn't be better served, and I'm just throwing this out there, because all, a lot of this information is brand new, and rather than rush this through, I just wonder it wouldn't be in our best interest to table it, so we have another month to do research and get all of our ducks in a row? I know that's probably not what people wanna hear, but I, I'd rather, I'd rather do what's right, and I'm not saying I know what's right, but I would rather do what's right than rush it through and make a mistake.
And you guys obviously, obviously have that ability to, to table or to deny or to recommend approval, that's.
Cause I'm just one vote, so that's, but that's my thoughts.
Okay, let's discuss that, and if we do table it, then what would be our intended net, or our, what the next steps that we would like to see happen? Because if you had Danielle and Roger write this, would, would we, I mean, would you put together more people to add more to it, to make it more strict? Like what would the tabling, what, what would our, what would the goal be?
My goal would be that I would be able to obtain more information, and then I would either be less likely to say, yeah, I think, uh, special use permit, because I could be very specific on approving that, or maybe it wouldn't, maybe I don't need that. And that's all I'm saying, I just don't wanna do something that, that invites something and we don't have as much control as we need. That's just my thoughts.
I can bring up a great point. Because when we changed the code last year to add more special uses or remove them, it was because of that, just to have a little bit more control on what goes in some of these zones. So we don't have, you know, to her point, coming in and, and, you know, because at the end of the day, like, we, we can't tell the property owners what to do with their property, you know what I mean? Like, if they wanna, they wanna sign an NDA and sell to a data center, then that's what they're gonna do, you know what I mean? But we just have to figure out what the code is and make that fit our needs, if you will, or serve our, our interests well, so.
Danielle, uh, who, who old, I know you, cause you guys talk to a lot of different people.
Correct.
Can you tell me, can you tell us, maybe who you reached out to?
Sure.
Cause I know it's, you guys have done a lot of research on it.
Right. And we talked to the City of Tulsa and Rogers County, both, both of those have had very recent and still working on some, uh, projects that are data centers. Um, we've reached out to them and kinda see what they're doing. They, obviously, they were more flat-footed than we are, um, where they, they kind of, it kinda came up and it was like, hey, this is what we want to happen, and then they didn't have anything in place for it at the time. Um, they do now, um, and they do a lot by right, but it has to meet the guidelines within the ordinance. And Tulsa's ordinance is kinda vague on it, believe it or not, but I've heard from their planner up there that they're looking at doing some updates to, similar to what we have. And it's not, what they have was, was, I was surprised by how little it was, to be honest. Um, but I was like, okay. But then we also looked at like Phoenix and other areas, just to kinda see what, what they did in Oklahoma City, um, and talked with them and looked at what they had. So we kind of combined everything that we found into this ordinance and then added and amended.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, I, there's a lot of things, I mean, obviously we got this packet Wednesday, right? We looked at it. Um, there's a lot of things in here that look right, right? Lot, I mean, you can tell that you've done a lot of good research. Lighting is obviously one of my forte's. Um, the, the construction of the, the guidelines of the landscaping, all that stuff, but I got it Wednesday, got some concerns today. I mean, for me, I mean, you, you, you've done some research, you've done, I don't know how much time you have in this, but probably a lot, but I'm with you as well. I mean, what's it hurt to table it and do a little bit more research and get it right for losing the controllability and writing it and it be set in stone? Because we don't know what we don't know.
And Stephen, that was my next question. If we don't know of anything that's on the table right now, surely one month to give us more time to look at this, if we take, if we did agree to table it? I don't see how, how could that hurt us?
I don't know that.
I don't know either.
Right, I don't know that, I mean, let me slid you right to, to do that tabling, um, and I'll let Mr. Deckard add in if there's anything that he had as far as that tabling.
And remember, see, she said, she keeps hearing when, it's not when, it's if.
Right.
And all this is, is pure prep, and we wanna be ahead of the curve when, if somebody comes in and wants to build a data center or whatever it is, we wanna be ahead of the curve. So we have thought and looked forthright and what is actually going on in, you know, in the market and in, in economic development and all of that. And I can tell you right now, I've been in on two deals since I've been here and I'm two years behind. I mean, I, I got in there and jumped right in and I, I'm two years behind. So I've gotta get my mind out in front, and that's what, that's what this is. It's forethought that if this comes in, at that time, we can guide and be ready for, if it's a data center or whatever it is, we have foresight to be able to be ready to go in. That's all this is.
Right, until you're.
This is kinda, this is kind of, in my opinion, kinda jumped into when it's coming, this is what we're gonna do, we want more control. That has zero to do with it. It, and I know the grapevine and all of that and all their talking and the Black Widow Network, I get all of that. But that is not what this is. This is just forethought of planning in case they come. It's not stay in agriculture.
No, no, we know that.
That is not gonna happen. So with all the activity that goes on in, you know, the market around, well, that seems to be the hottest thing going, well, we wanna make sure that we're ready in case that happens. If that's what we wanna do, just cause we're ready doesn't mean we have to do it. We still have total control on whether we wanna do it or not do it or whatever. That we're not given that. I, that's what I hear now, is that we're thinking about, we're giving up total control because we're trying to be forthright. It's, has nothing to do with that. We just wanna be prepped. Uh, quite frankly, that's never happened here at the city.
Yeah.
Just to be honest with you, that's never happened to be out forthright to be an economic development. And I can tell you right now, guy sitting in the chair for 10 weeks, when Crest went down south, that killed us, where, where we're at now. We're behind the eight ball. So my dedication, if I get this job, for full, I won't get into preaching during a minute, is the fact that if we continue to bury our heads in the sand, Oklahoma will, Oklahoma City will just suck up everything around, and we're gonna be sitting in the middle, just on an island, looking at each other, thinking, hey, how you doing? So this is forthright thinking forward, is all this is. And I know there's a group of people that don't want forthright and, you know, all of that good stuff, well, I'm sorry, if we don't, we're gonna, we're gonna be, we're gonna end up on an island where Oklahoma City has eaten all of the businesses up, and then we're gonna be totally dependent on Oklahoma City like we are with what, when not totally on water. But 60% of the water we use is that. So that's what, that's what this is. It's jumped into grapevine, wind, all of those networks, all of those things like that. And that creates what we're talking about here, and that's not what this is about. This simply, are we prepared if this comes about?
No, and I totally agree, and I wanna, I wanna be forthright, but at the same time, I wanna make sure that I have all the information to make the best decision. And that's why I thought if we tabled it, I just don't see how we're harmed in any way, and we may even learn something, that was my only point.
And I'm not disagree with that, I'm just telling you the thought process.
I understand.
And, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a faction out there that don't, that they don't want progression and they don't want, they don't want any of that.
Yeah.
And I get that, and so, I mean, that's where we're at.
Yeah.
So, but it is, all it is, is thinking forward.
Right.
And I'm sorry, but that hasn't happened here very often.
Yeah.
Thank you sir.
I think it's a great, great deal you're doing, like I say, I'd just like a little more time to research it and look over it. So my motion will, would be that we table it, but there may be more discussion if we don't have the motion.
I, um, I, I, I understand what you're saying too, but I go back to, I mean, like if we're talking, if, if any of the discussion points, cause I just like having, like when we did the short-term, I like having the teeth. And the things that we really can control, that we get to have the, some of the say, is not the water and not the electricity and those things like that. That's all gonna be determined, in my opinion, by all the, I mean, there's so many things in place after that, you know, and, and that are beyond this. But these are the things that we get to say, like the, the materials, the, this is how this is gonna go, this is how it's gonna look, this is what we want. And so that at least, you know, I mean, these are, like, I think with our shirt, this is just my opinion, but with like our short-term rentals, we have some of the most restrictive things in place that, to protect Yukon. And that's my big thing I like to do is protect, I like having this, cause I think it is a protection of Yukon. I, I get that we don't know all the things about it, but when you're, the things that we can control as far as like the lighting, the, all the other stuff, that, the traffic that, or the different parts that go into this, uh, the decibel levels of sound, all those things, we can go ahead and have those in place. And so when they get to the parts about the water and the electricity, they have to get, if that does not pass, that is something they have to get a special use for, they have to do all these other things. And that's something that then would come to us for those extra things. That's just where I'm at on the thought process.
But wouldn't be, it wouldn't be just as good if we had more time to research it and we passed it next month and we've had time to research it. Because, I mean, when I read stuff like, the average data center takes as much power as 25,000 homes, and I don't know, I just got that information, stuff like that. All I'm saying is, I'm not against it.
Right.
I'm just saying, I'm not comfortable yet with, with going forward with the information we have, it's just in a very compressed state. And I just thought, if we have time to research it and we approve it next month, there's no harm, no foul. I mean, that's just my thoughts.
And you, I mean, and, and you have that freedom to make that motion?
Absolutely.
Whether we agree or not though?
Yeah.
I mean, that's how we will vote, but if that's, if that's what you wanna do, you know what I mean?
That's what I wanna do.
We'll make it, go for it, so.
Well, I would feel better because I don't see any harm in it. So I would like to make a motion that we table this until the next meeting, uh, and we've had, to give us more time to research it.
Can we speak on the motion?
Pardon me?
The motion to table is not debatable, and then there's, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay.
Now we can have discussion, right? Again or no?
On the motion to table is generally not debatable, that's, that's the primary motion.
So then it's about then.
Is the discussion still open on I to make?
The, the motion to table takes precedence.
Call book, please.
No.
Knuckles.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Clark.
No.
You're gonna do this to me?
Did Rockland, Jared vote to table it?
No. I vote no. Sorry, I believe, I, I like this, sorry Craig.
So the motion failed.
So Roger, what do we do now if the motion's failed?
So is there a motion?
To an item.
So we can make a motion to recommend.
Is this discussion still open?
On the main item, yes.
On the main item.
If, if the chair recognizes you.
Yes ma'am.
Suzanne Heggie, 720 Chateau Avenue. Um, Mr. Knuckles, I, I agree with what you're saying. If you guys say you got this win last Wednesday, um, I'll tell you, the lawyer in me thinks you are, when you pass this ordinance, you are putting restrictions in place, but understand that the city too is then restricted by the ordinance. So it's a double-edged sword. I know nothing about data centers. I know they suck up a lot of power and that's about all I know. Um, Mr. Deckard was talking about the statute that was passed, that was about water rates. It wasn't about water usage, it was about charging for water rates, not whether or not we have enough water to support that type of system. Um, the advantage I see in saying making this a special use permit, that has to comply with the, the requirements that the city imposes, you could use this ordinance that you have as your guideline, saying subject, limit, um, subject to but not limited by the ordinance that we have. But regardless, I think it's a very important discussion that you should have, and you need to understand it, once you do it, it's really hard to undo and it's really hard to make it any different, especially when you don't know what it is that you're looking at. You don't know what animal it is that you're looking at, because you might not have somebody who comes in for another year and a half, and in that amount of time, the technology could have changed, the, the space requirement could have changed, the water requirement could have changed, the energy requirement could have changed, all of those things could have changed. I understand forward thinking and I understand looking forward, and I think that's important. I think we need to do that in this city. But I also think that the city needs to look at, um, give it a little more thought than just less than the week that you've had to look at it, because this is a pretty big issue. You know, it's, it's a really big issue for you guys, and I, I think it's important that you do look at it. Like you say, unless we've got one that's already been proposed to you and is standing right here and need some information on it, what's the rush? Um, you know, I think if you can do your, your research and figure it out, um, the hardest thing when, when I was practicing law was to try to get that sweet spot where you, because documents that are drafted are construed against the person who drafts them. So anything, any ordinance the city passes is gonna be construed against the city. So I think you really just need to look carefully at the language, and that's just my legal brain thinking there. Um, I appreciate your time and I appreciate your effort because it's, there's a lot of information in here, and, and I think it's important that you consider it carefully, which sounds like you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Stephanie Burdon, 15 Michael.
I just don't see what it would have hurt to let Danielle contact Atlanta. Why did they wanna change their permitting? I think that it wouldn't have hurt to just wait, what, three weeks, and that happens like that, the month's up like that. Um, this is only gonna make people now go, why did they have to do it so quick? Why did they have to do it so quick? It's not gonna be a good look. And another thing, I think there is some more things that we need to find out. I'm not against this, and I'm not against moving forward and progress. I agree with what Jeff said, we did, we do need some regulations on this. Did we cover everything? You, uh, Wednesday, you had the weekend. I mean, this, I just started researching this and I'm learning something, I find something new, and now, you know, the computer pops up something new for me to read every day now about it. And there are still a lot of unanswered questions, and I do appreciate everything that's been done to date. I think it's great information, but is it enough? I mean, would it have been a bad idea to add, like Suzanne said, these are the guidelines and we can add something that we, we have more power than we just gave ourselves? That was, you know, what I was hoping to say before you all voted. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Amy McAllister. Um, one thing that I wonder, uh, I'm, I'm like you, Mr. Wright, I hear the grapevine, and the land that I've heard that this is going on is actually not ours, it's Oklahoma City. So my question is, is how are we protecting Yukon from Oklahoma City? I mean, they're kind of the big bad wolf, couldn't they come in and put it in south of I-40 and west of Frisco? Guzzle up our water? So I guess I, I would say. Guzzle up our water. So I guess I I would say, what can we do within our ordinances to make sure that you all are doing what you can to protect the citizens of Yukon? And I agree with everyone. We've been saying this all spring. We all know our 184 acres is very valuable and can be used for wonderful commercial, retail, whatever space. It can be used, it it can bring in tax revenue. We get that. But what happens if all the NDAs are for Oklahoma City residents? They sell their land and oh, they just want to buy a strip of land across ours to get to the OG&E power plant. Are we going to do it? I I just think it's something we need to consider because I think that's really what the grapevine is saying.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Well, this is my first plan, a joyous C 605 Kingsland Place, my first planning meeting. And I've lived here for 31 years. I did not come here because of rumors that I've heard. I've got friends that do a lot of research that live in Luther, one of the former mayors that's in Luther. So they have gotten information for a while. I've got from the FOIA request, an email here from Charles Conns from Beltline Energy. And this is, the date is May 16th, 2025. And says, I'm in a meeting in Yukon at 9:00 AM on Monday. Could we do 11:30 on Monday instead? So if they were meeting in Yukon in May, why did we just find out about this this week? I think we need to take a little time on this and get some more information. These these non-disclosure agreements, the the mayor of Luther signed one. Not somebody out there somewhere. It was the mayor. And it was only the mayor and only one person from Beltline Energy that signed that. And that's, they're saying they're not going to disclose information to the people that are going to be stuck with the bill. That is not okay. I do not want to go forward with any business that operates like that. Let's find a business that doesn't have horror stories from all over the United States because there's lots of those. That's it.
Hello, Bill.
Hey, Bill.
Bill Baker, 500 Castle Rock. Good evening. Couple of things I want to address that were allowed to be said here tonight. I think the citizens that I've met in Yukon and I've met a lot of them, uh, have been for progress. And simply because their view of progress is different than the city council's view of progress does not make them less of citizens. They're just as good a citizen as somebody that does agree with the city council. So I think that was that was allowed to go out over the air and I just want to address that. Progress comes in many forms. Uh, Mr. Knuckles, I think your idea of a PUD is a is a very good idea. Because the the horse is already out of the barn. The zoning has already been changed from agriculture to industrial. And looking back over the history of this body, you can go back as far as you want. Agriculture land is just a placeholder. That does not mean it's being farmed. That's that's not true. Agricultural land is is just what it is until it's something else. And, um, so the way this would normally have been done is a developer would have come to this board and said, I want to do X. In order to do X, and he would tell you what that is. I want this agriculture land zone C or I or whatever. So it is, I don't think you could find another instance, uh, in planning commission history where let's zone it because if you build it, they will come. I don't think you're going to find that. Developers come, ask for zoning, you pass the zoning. The other thing is something that Commissioner Guy said, and you're talking about things that are passed here and sent forward, like short term rental. The form it's sent out of here and may not be the form or a lot of times probably won't be the form it comes out of the city council on. So we had to be really careful. Uh, if we say, well, let's just have them every half mile and it goes somewhere else and now it's there's no size, there's no restriction in spacing at all. So whatever you do decide out of this on this, remember that it may not end up that way. And you don't have any control over it. I know that. And that's kind of a helpless feeling. Uh, but, uh, the word progress is a little squishy. If you got a thousand people in Yukon in a room and ask them what progress was, you're probably going to get a thousand answers. So nobody's answer is better. Uh, we're not asking to go back to, uh, uh, one general store on Main Street. I think that, you know, people do have some ideas. And, um, to say that we had a action item on zoning and an action item on planning and an action item on industrial use and an and an action item on, um, data centers. And nobody in the city of Yukon has any idea that data centers may not come. We have four action items that lead down that road. I think people watching this tonight would go, really? Seriously? And I know we don't, we have for a long time, we have not had a an economic development officer that had no other job. It's been a long time since we had a person that that was their business card, economic development, and they had nothing else to do all day. And if you want to know why, you know, maybe we're behind. Make sure that person is an economic development person by career, not something else.
Absolutely.
And not a not a not a not a good person. There's a lot of good people that don't know how to do economic development. And the person we had in the past, uh, not here anymore. Every time you go to Lowe's, say, thank you, Larry Mitchell. Because that's why it's there, because he had nothing else to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
We always appreciate your opinion. I voted no on tabling it because I don't think I can add any more value to this. I feel like the smartest people in the room created this and that's it strictly because I just don't see how I could I could add anything else to it. Was my question for you was, you'd make it stricter. I don't know how to make it stricter, if you will, you know, so it's just just my explanation.
I voted to table it, not that I opposed to this, but I would like to understand this a little bit more. And that's why I voted.
Yeah.
So.
And likewise.
I mean, what's it gonna hurt? I mean, we're all leading to this avenue like you pointed. I mean, I don't know any more than you do, but what's a month gonna hurt?
And Stephen, that was my question. What would it hurt to do it? But but we voted and and I respect that. That was just my opinion.
I feel like whatever, whatever we do tonight, like when the company comes to open their data center, everyone's going to have a different business plan. Everyone of them's going to have a different idea how they want to do it. And we're going to be sitting here longer than tonight, going over those details. We went over details on a on a young man trying to run an air compressor out on the edge of town that should have been done in 10 seconds. So it'll be, it'll be a drawn out process if this comes to pass. So I'm like Jared, smarter people than me have put this package together. I'm okay with, I'm okay with running with what we have because it's going to change. Whatever someone brings to us is going to change. And we're going to have to work together with them to either make it go or not go, whatever that is, along with any other project we have in front of us.
You know, for me, like, um, somebody mentioned OKC potentially getting and then going through this. That's one reason I would like to have something out there so that if this is something that is coming forward, that then Yukon would, we wouldn't just be a bypass because if OKC gets it, they, like I said, they water, they get electricity. But if we have something in place, we get to control some things. We get to have something in place and have some benefit from instead of OKC taking all benefit of that. So that's one reason that I didn't want to.
Guys, good. We've read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that recommend approval of the proposed amendment to Article Three by adding Section 215 dash 310 data centers to the Yukon Unified Development Code.
I'll second that.
Call the vote, please.
Wright.
Yes.
Geis.
Yes.
Knuckles.
No.
Jones.
No.
Clark.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to the final item of the evening, item number nine. Discussion consideration and possible action to recommend adoption of an ordinance to amend Article Four, Section 215 dash 046 Industrial Districts.
It's me again. Okay, so what this came about was doing all the research that was done. It also led to, well, how how, what do our our ordinance stack up as far as industrial? And one of the things that kind of stuck out was the proposed maximum build building coverage of industrial. Obviously, industrial is usually a higher intense use, uh, in general. And so one thing that we were thinking of is seeing about increasing that lot building coverage to match kind of what is going on around us. And within the metro, there's some cities that are a little in that middle, uh, region, but that's, uh, and they also considered it as lot coverage and not building coverage. So this is strictly just building coverage. They'd still have to, anything that came in industrial, still have to meet the landscaping requirements, parking requirements, all of that. This is just kind of increasing that building coverage to where it kind of matches what your industrial uses would normally see.
All the setbacks, everything's.
Yeah, they still have to meet all of that. They still have to meet all of the all of the little pieces. It's this is just kind of amending it to where you'd have have the higher build coverage that you'd expect to see in industrial.
I mean, and what am I not seeing? It seems like this is a good idea. I mean, to allow them bigger buildings. I mean, is there a negative thought that you guys could come up with? I mean, like a drawback to this?
Because we're not changing height requirements and all that. Nothing. It's just the building.
It's just the building coverage. That is it. That's the only thing that's going to be that's being proposed.
You guys have any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Read my mind. Yes, sir.
Bill Baker, 500 Castle Rock. Uh, I read through this. It's well written. Uh, it is exactly the same industrial restrictions and even the 80% building coverage is exactly what's being done in Edmund right now. When you drive through Edmund's industrial parks, they look good. They're clean. 80% sounds like a lot, but it still leaves a lot of ADA parking and everything else.
Well, I think if that's the precursor, you still have to abide by all the other rules. Like you don't, you don't want a little bitty tiny parking lot with this massive building. It needs to be
Right. So.
Equal, if you will.
So.
Proportionate.
But I do like that, uh, you know, I know you didn't just copy Edmund's thing, but the way they do their industrial parks really does come out good.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? Seeing no further discussion? I've read the staff report, received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that recommend approval of the proposed amendment to Article Four, Section 215 dash 406 Industrial Districts of the Yukon Unified Code. Do I have a second?
A second.
Call or vote, please.
Clark.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Nick Knuckles.
Yes.
Geis.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes. Any new business? Open discussion. Longest meeting we've had. We didn't even talk about any of theater. Who would have thought? Too late. It's hard. Conrad already printed it. We ain't doing it, so.
Does everybody watch the the school zones coming up this week?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Watch out for our babies.
Yep. I want to applaud our 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 staff and and our council. I mean, I'll be honest with you. I feel like we're headed in the right direction with with everything that's on the table and and the conversations. It's it's healthy, even though, uh, at times it's challenging, but applaud you guys.
Well, I thank you guys too for being here. Geis and I've been here for just a, you know, a little bit longer, but you know, this ain't easy. So, um, we don't get paid. So I can't get fired, really, but you know, we do our best and I hope I hope you, all of our millions of viewers out there, understand that, so. They're all like, good lord, Jared, y'all talk too much. So our next meeting is, oh, forgive me.
September 15.
September 15th. Meeting adjourned.